Call to order the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, 1:00 PM School Board Workshop. Please stand for the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose crushed eyes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the land we watched where so gallants we streaming? And the rockets' red glare, all first we seen? They proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, roll call.
Chair, I'm a sheriff here.
Conklin, present.
Kristin Chong.
Wolfery, present.
Sally Hunt, present.
Let's talk a more.
Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda for today?
I do request that we bring eight point zero four up to right after public comment. We do know that members of the sheriff's office is here with us. So we would like to move that up.
We will do that. And so then we will move on to public comment. If we have anybody scheduled for public comment.
Yeah, board liaison updates.
My apologies, I did jump over that there. Go ahead.
You'll good, I don't have any.
But yes.
Good news, I'll have any.
Me neither, I mean.
Yeah, there's not a lot going on right now, so yeah.
I have none.
Right, so we will, Ty, did you have anything you wanted to add for board liaison?
I don't think.
Okay, all right.
Well, I guess, I'm sorry. I'll give you just a brief update for the ILA. We had the ILA meeting and they're just working on finalizing everything. Everything looked fine, but all municipalities did a presentation and shared. Anybody thinks Flagler County is not growing, all they need to do is watch that meeting because we are growing by leaps and bounds. A lot of really great discussion about the future of where schools might be. I know that committee is very interested in, specifically, Benel was requesting some kind of input on where future schools might be located. Staff shared that it's pretty much, very much driven by population and where future development is happening and occurring. And we had a side conversation about trees. That was interesting, it was very good. But I think overall, Dave, there really wasn't too much new or earth shattering. I mean, we, everybody kind of gave an update. The numbers that we were looking at were from March. They were going to update everybody with the new numbers. As soon as we get that information, we'll share it with the whole entire board.
We were, we were looking at an MOU, Volusia County, on Hunter's Ridge.
Yeah, the conversation around Hunter's Ridge and some of our students attending their schools. And also over at Old Kings, some of Volusia County's students attending Old Kings. So kind of working out an MOU where there's mutual agreement on both sides there. That was really.
That's really great, thanks for that update.
And Dr. Conklin, anything significant from our time together at FAS, FSBA that came up?
Thank you. I did bring you back. I'll have to check if it's in my car. But I did bring you back, Chris Doolan, the small school district in Sorchium's packet, meeting packet. He always, they always do a phenomenal job with a great financial overview. In the financial overview, actually, he has provided a nice snapshot. I call it kind of, we were talking about it, almost like a cheat sheet, right? Because it's the run for all of the school districts statewide. But he kind of gives you a good idea of what to specifically zero in on and look at. One of the things you'll notice in the budget, it looks like our budget went up, it was almost $10 million. But then you flip a couple of pages and you realize that our family empowerment scholarships are up, over $10 million. And so there really is no new money at all. Patty, am I wrong?
No, that is correct, and that is exactly what we just presented to our unions before they closed.
Yeah, there's really actually, there's negative money going into the school year. So just wanted to kind of let you all know that. I'll share with you the packets. Again, you can kind of go through, he does a great job pinpointing what to look at, where to find it, and where to look at it. But the first page, it looks like we are up $10 million. It's very deceiving because the reality of the situation is, you flip a few pages, like I think three pages, and you see the family empowerment scholarship money, and that's over the $10 million. So it's alarming across the state. Flagler, of course, is not the only one. But again, the difficulty in planning, whether that's fully going to be the number, or the final number, or if it's going to be under or over, is a, you know, kind of a wait and seeking. But it's very interesting, so I'll make sure I promise to you to get those packets to you. Because I lugged them everywhere with me. Because I care about all of them.
Okay, so we will move on now to public comments.
No one signed up for public comments.
Is there anybody in from the public that would like to come forward now? See none, I'll bring it back to the board here. And we will move on to operational services, eight point zero four. We're going to move that up. Welcome.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
It's been a few days.
Just a minute, right?
Thanks, Tommy.
Good afternoon, Chair Hurry. School Board members, Superintendent Moore, for the awareness of our publics, that the document that was just shared with you will be posted on Board Docs. But we are here today to discuss the school resource deputy contract and our local agreement with Flagler County Sheriff's Office for the 2024-2025 school year. Just for your awareness, there, there really is no language changes proposed right now, right now. So you do see Appendix A, you don't actually have the, the contract in front of you. Because the, really, the only language change that really was, that was needed, did come from the House Bill 1473 about training requirements. Making, and we, we have agreed that the sheriff's office will maintain the training requirements. If you're not aware, two years ago, when we, when we went through our operational audit, there were some, some training requirements that the school district was responsible for storing. The, the training that the sheriff's office goes through with the,
Crisis.
Crisis response training. So we did put that in the contract that the sheriff's office will maintain that, that training requirements.
And that was something that came up across the state. Whereas they, when they would come, the Office of Safe Schools would come in to ask a question about it, we would be deemed for not having it, but it wasn't something that really should have been in our possession. And it's something that the, the sheriff's office has, and so that language was included.
Something that, there, there are some other, some, some languages regarding after-school activities, related costs that, that the sheriff's office and the district are still working through right now. That would be, that would be in the, the contract as well. But before you are, is really the, the cost for the commander, the sergeant as supervisors, the, the 10th school resource deputies, the one full-time position for the alternative program, and the nine crossing guards for the 2024-25 school year.
So the nine school crossing guards, that's the total for all, just all nine of them together?
Yes, it is.
And that's one for each one, right?
Actually, no, there's, there's, there's two in two different venues.
Yeah, so there's, there's two at the Belter Elementary on the north side of Belter Parkway. There's two on the south side of Belter Parkway closer to Indy Trails Middle School. Wadsworth, Buddick Taylor, there's three, there's one on Parkview Drive, and there's two on, on Belter Parkway. And then there's the one in Benello.
So do any of our schools not have a crossing guard?
Anywhere there's a.
All cases. Which we really wouldn't need.
If they don't have it.
There's no, yeah, there's no actual cross.
Right. High school.
Nothing for high school.
Yes, that, that's a question, yeah.
Yeah, nothing for high school.
And I, I just want to say, I commend you guys. I'm out driving the community, I see our kids, and I see the hard work they do. But I do think that's worth looking at with what Volusia County has just recently gone through. If there's any improvements, that could be made.
No, absolutely. And, and I was away last, last week at the FS3 conference in Orlando with the school safety specialist. But I did have a conversation with Mr. Dance. There is a community traffic safety team within the county with, with multi-agencies. And that, that was a topic of discussion in last week's meeting I did not attend. But Mr. Dance and I have spoken about that. And being proactive and not reactive in, in something like that.
Tommy, can you estimate what we spend annually on overtime, roughly? I'm just curious.
Overtime for an absent school resource deputy or?
Total overtime.
Athletics.
Yeah, everything.
For the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Everything. I, I don't, I didn't pull that. Do you still have it pulled?
We're estimating two ends, approximately about $45,000 is what the estimate projection is based.
So that's what the budget's set for?
The budget was originally set for $25,000, which is what we spent last year. And it has increased some this year. I defer to Mr. Bullock and ask you, any questions on the increase?
Okay.
And those, those increases come for different reasons. Be it someone, how someone has to stay late because there is a, a situation that's happening at the school that requires one of our SRDs to stay, stay over.
Yeah.
And special risks.
And we do anticipate, and I know, I'm sorry, Dr. Conklin.
No, you're fine, you're totally fine.
And we do anticipate that continuing to increase as the requirement for what we need to provide to our schools continues to grow. And so we will get, continue to work through that through 1473 and some of the changes that are made from that. Continue to wait for the state board. They will be bringing some clarification in July that will also aid in looking at what it is that we will need for, in that area of overtime going into the next year. But yes, right now, it's going to be up close to $50,000.
$50,000, okay. I just want to make sure we're prepared, that's why I asked that we have that extra money, because I know we need the services. So, Chair.
Yes, please go ahead.
So just a couple of things. I guess this is a little bit of a pet peeve, and thank you for coming. Let me just say, everything, before I have share my thoughts and comments, we appreciate the SROs, we love the relationship with the sheriff's department. But we're in the middle of the workshop and we just got the cost list. There's no opportunity to go back and compare it. This contract increases compared to last year. We can't see where the increases are. I'm not happy, again, about getting the contract on the day of the workshop. And we don't even have the contract.
And so last year, we were definitely in a different situation where the board received it on, on the day of, or the day before. You are to take action. This is not something we are bringing forward to you to take action. And so we do understand that it is definitely an inconvenience to get it today. But we do hope to answer any questions that you guys may have over the next couple of weeks as we go towards the July 28th approval.
So in 2022, we can talk about last year's contract, but in 2022, our contract was $944,000. It is now, with no change in personnel, no additional personnel, it is now almost, it is over $400,000 in addition to just two years ago. I want to know, where is $400,000 being spent? And on what? Well, there was an additional SRA, first of all. That we're paying fully. So that's, that's the first. That's in there. Increase. It wasn't in 2022. Okay.
That's one, that's just one change. And last year, it was, FRS was a huge part of the increase that we experienced last year.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There was an FRS increase last year that.
So how, I guess what I'm, I'm asking is, and, and it's in last year's agreement as well, right? How did the school crossing guards go from 114,000 to 214,000? How did an additional $100,000?
You know, that's a great question.
Yeah.
Now, it's, it's actually a very good question, same question that I asked, why? And, and the truth of the matter is, is our former finance director, when she provided the numbers in the previous years, was inaccurate. There is a change as a result of that, and it's the actual cost of what it is for the school crossing guards.
How many hours are they out there? Like, I guess it would be in the morning and at night, so.
Traditionally, about six hours or so.
Throughout the day?
I don't have a problem with paying the school crossing guards a decent wage at all. Please, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to understand, it's the same amount of people, it's nine and nine, and there's a $100,000 difference. I'm just trying to figure that out.
No, that's, you know, again, that's why she's our former. Now, the, the cost was.
Okay, got it.
Good thing.
And to speak on crossing guards as well, unfortunately, Flagler County and, and the city of Palm Coast, we do not have a parking fine violation ordinance, or, so we, there's nothing in Flagler County that we actually can receive funding through parking fines to pay for a school crossing guard program. So that, that, that is a direct cost to the school district.
Okay, so last year, we had the retirement changes, correct? So for the same, because I'm, because, I mean, everyone should know, this is what I do. So I'm looking at last year's agreement and the agreement before that. You know, last year's agreement included the changes in FRS, and it's $100,000 less. I'm not talking about school crossing guards now, right? So for the commander, for the sergeant, the 10 deputies, which is the same here, commander, sergeant, 10 deputies, it was $918,000. This year, it's over a hun, it's, it's $100,000 additional.
Again, the difference was, you weren't paying full cost in, in prior years. Now you were paying the act, not the full cost, but the actual cost of those people who are incumbent within those positions. We still had significant increases for the FRS again this year. Unfortunately, special risk people continue to climb every year so they can pay for these new programs. This past legislative session, it went from 30 years for special risk back down to 25, where it had been for a number of years. Well, unfortunately, you know, there's a huge cost to that, and our legislators could have done other things to help ease the cost of local governments across the state by pulling from reserves to make that hold, so they can make those kinds of changes. But that was not done as a result. So dropping it back down creates, again, additional costs for FRS. FRS is still our largest increase across the board.
Okay. Do we, and the reason I'm asking is because you just heard financially what I just shared. We're going into the next school year in the negative, not in the plus, in the negative. And this contract comparatively is a significant increase, but no change in staffing or personnel or in addition to. Did the percentage change? The percentage of cross-share change? I know the county said they weren't going to do that.
They weren't going to do that, we had other numbers for that cross, that, that change. We had, we discussed and went through, actually, but no. They're, they're indicating that they're going to keep our budget whole the way that it is, and they're going to continue to fund. If it were to change, that number would be like 1.58 million.
I think we also have to factor in the cost of living now.
Well, we have contractual agreements as well that, that affect our, that our cost of living is set by the county administrator, the county BOCC, set our cost of living increases at 3.9%. So there's a 3.9% on top of the merit increases that they give throughout the, so it adds up very, very rapidly. Our starting deputy sheriff this next year, maybe a little over $60,000.
That's good.
Well, it's, it's, it's great, you know, yes, from where they were at $38,000 seven years ago. But there's a cost of doing business.
But you see, we'd like to get our teachers there. We'd rather give them, you know. But I, I understand what you're saying. I would, I'm looking forward to seeing the language of the contract because it's not just this that we're looking at. It's also the unaccounted overtime and everything else. And again, I'm going to say it, I love our SROs.
We do.
I love our SRDs. We couldn't do what we do without them, truly, truly. If anything, I'd love us to be able to have more of it in our schools. It, it's, it's just a frustration not having all of the information with a completed contract in front of us, that's all.
And we will get that information, get that language added. One of the things that we did discuss, as you are stating, Dr. Conklin, is really, we do, we love the program, and we want it to be something that continues to be affordable in 1473. It does have language in 1473 that there will be an opportunity for the formula to be revisited. Because right now, we, as you all know, we are not fully funded in, in this program. And we're very thankful for our BOCC for their contribution, or it would be something that is absolutely unaffordable for us. And so as we work through it as a board, and I know that the sheriff's office would be in agreement to us work together to put out language for consideration for the state board to consider in what that formula should be. So because we are a safe community, that does not mean that we don't need appropriate allocations in order for us to be able to fund our requirement to have a safe school officer in each school.
Yeah, I, I think between the three entities, because the bottom line is, we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul. We're stealing from the general fund to make it work, because the allocation from the state doesn't, doesn't fit the bill.
No, it does not, and, you know, for those who may not understand what we're talking about, the safer the community, the less state monies flow for state schools.
Yeah.
As a result. And seven years ago, with the sheriff's. And seven years ago, with the sheriff sitting next to me at this table, he, he made the offer, "I'll go and lobby to try to get something done and changed on this entire process, because this district is being penalized because we have a safe community." And of course, the larger communities that are not that safe, they don't want the formula to change because...
Of course, they get more money.
They get a lot more money as a result.
But the number of SRDs and the, the need in the schools is relatively the same.
Well, with the changes that have come down from legislated from Tallahassee, it says, "You must do X, Y, and Z," of course, it's, it's
Right.
We're all on the same even playing field when it comes to that, except for our funding.
Yeah, it's interesting, when you go back and look at the, the first proposed language from fourteen seventy-three, you can see that it was in there, that the certain appropriation, the calculation was going to possibly even be determined by your Cessor data. I think that would require schools to accurately report their Cessor data to the state, but that did get redacted, but it did add language, specific language for, for the department to identify an appropriate formula for the safe school allocation. So, that is a positive step in the right direction.
But it's gonna, it's gonna take work on our part, you know, as they begin to call for those workshops and comments, we're gonna have to be willing to make a comment and make suggestions for what can or could be used in order to come to the, to correct funding for, for our, for our school district.
And the more of a united front there is, the better.
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate you taking the comments. Again, I appreciate the relationship, support the SRDs in our schools, it's just the funding pieces.
Very good. We will get those details to you, not the details, we'll get you, the language and any additional breakdowns that, that we need to provide and, and get that up to you, and this will come back before you for additional questions on July ninth, and then it will come before you for board consideration for approval. I wanna say it's July twenty-eighth, this is a meeting date.
Okay.
May I have one, one question here? On the total, one point one six two three nine one, is that, is that just the salary? But is that, is that have also other fixed hard costs, like?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's, it's salary benefits and operational costs.
Operational. When we, and when we're looking at the contract, do we, do we see those broken out where the operational costs from the total, I, I have to revisit that.
Now, I can give you, actually, we can certainly provide that, we just did a presentation at the city of Palm Coast for our review. We, we broke down the entire cost of a deputy where the, where the dollars are actually spent, and how they're amortized over period of time and such.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to see that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
For a little bit more clarity on that number, that would be helpful.
And, and Chief, you might, for the board, or for the board, the average cost of a deputy is?
Right now, it's a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Total.
So, that includes all the hardware?
That's
Whatever's on their person?
Salary benefits, operation, equipment?
Yeah.
The whole package, health insurance?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
What, what, what it costs to employ a person?
Yeah.
By contrast, however, and we just mentioned this in our presentation, by contrast, a deputy sheriff in St. John's County, according to their sheriff who did a presentation, is two oh six. Now, I'm, we're still trying to figure out what the difference is, but, because we're competitive with them in pay now.
Salary.
Yeah, there's just more of them, I think.
That's not more of them.
No, it shouldn't.
No, it's, it's, the overhead cost may be higher and such.
It's that operational cost.
Yeah.
Health insurance and stuff, yeah, could be, yeah, too.
We know that. Any other questions on this agenda item?
Just appreciate you guys, thank you so much.
Yes, we do appreciate everything.
And, and, and I know that it did not really come to the board in a timely manner, but they really
We won't brush the chops anymore.
Have been working hard on it. They were, we met last week, they met again today, so they've been working over, at it over time, and so, we do appreciate their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on to eight point zero one, Matanzas High School addition construction update. Mr. Bush, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Furry, Board Superintendent Moore. We're here to give you an update on the Matanzas addition, and I'm gonna turn it over to the project manager, Chuck Coats.
Good afternoon, everybody. The last time you saw this, similar slide, I think was in January, so a lot has changed. So, there's a quick overview of, of the same slide of the different buildings in the different areas the contractor's working in. Go to the next slide, please. So, Building Five Media and Construction Lab, this is the current progress as of last week. The exterior windows are ninety percent complete. The first floor M V P drywall and primer, actually, first coat of paint is, has been added since then. The second floor drywall is in, in progress, and they're cleaning up, getting ready to start doing the painting and stuff on that floor. Building twenty-two, which is our multipurpose building out near the athletic fields, the chilled water lines and the H V A C are all in place, the framing is done. Again, the drywall's eighty percent complete, but the main area that you see to your far right, that's all primed and first coat of paint, is on that, so everything's going well there. Building twenty-three, which is our new central energy plant, the two air-cooled chillers were brought in probably about a month and a half ago, and on the far right there, you see the pump skid that was dropped in by crane. Soon as that went on, they put the roof on, which on the far left there, you see that picture of the pump skid in place with the roofing in place, and since then, the roof is probably eighty-five percent complete right now. So, a lot of stuff going on in that chiller plant right now, for sure. Building four, top right, you'll see what the media center looked like prior. On the bottom left, you'll see that the demolition going into, which will be windows and a door that goes to the current cafeteria space. And on the far right, you'll, bottom, you'll see what is gonna be a STEM classroom. There'll be L V T floors and a couple sinks in there that the school will use after that.
Help me get my bearings for just one second, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, that middle picture, the way you're seeing, that is a, a wall that is in the cafeteria to separate
Oh, the wood behind, yeah.
Cafeteria from the construction, so that, that will get moved, removed, and you will be physically looking into the cafeteria from this point of view, if that wall was not there.
Okay.
Does that make sense where?
Yeah, I think so.
And that's the, what the old, what was the media center?
That's correct.
At the top.
And that now is?
Cafeteria.
Part of the cafeteria.
It's, two-thirds of it's gonna be a cafe. I say similar to the F P C Bistro.
Okay.
Something for that, that, they have a name coming up for that. And then, the other third is a classroom.
Got you, the STEM.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Here are just some miscellaneous pictures that, that I took, the ice tanks are much farther along than that, that's a picture of the hallway. The teachers came, I believe it was March fifteenth, right before they went on vacation, a group of teachers came through, there's about twenty-five of them that did a walkthrough. They were excited to see it. The bottom right, you see the two chillers that were set in place, they're now piped and, and everything's going well there. So, here's some aerial shots that the contractor had taken. So, this is Building twenty-two, or the way it looked just last week, so it's, it's coming along well. Here's a, the picture of the backside of it, the, so you, give you some general idea of what your, where these buildings are located. This is, uh, Building Five, along the top there, the roof is, I'd say the roof's ninety-five percent complete. The top edge there, around the corner, is gonna be red roofing to match, to bring the two buildings together. And then, the face of that, it'll be aluminum composite material that, that covers up that part that's orange, so that's not the final look. This is just another, another view of that from the bus loop side. That far right end there, you'll see that, that'll be all glass, and, so, the second floor, yeah, right there, the second floor, there's gonna be like a seating area there that, that's part of the media center.
Wow.
And if you would go back and talk to the other side of that same building and talk a little bit about, you know, the awning and what
Okay.
We did with, with, with that
Yeah.
The time being.
Now, I'd go up just a little bit, and, no, go back one. Yes, there. There's four concrete pads in the dirt there, you can kinda see them off the building by the two windows and the door, and there's gonna be a cover, yeah, right in that area. That door right there is gonna, no, not the garage, yeah, that door right there will go into the classroom, that'll be a covered area with fencing around it. So, the construction lab will have like three spaces, they'll have their, their classroom, which is very nice, they'll have their wood shop, and then this comes out to here, and it'll be another secured area that the, that they could all be in, and their, the teacher can monitor them all in one area.
And then, on the canopy that you see where it jogs out, that is actually temporary, that goes through the parking lot. We put that in just to allow the students during inclement weather that they would have a place to get to Buildings Nine and Ten. From there to those portables, the concreables, that will remain, and we plan to repurpose that temporary awning. We have a couple of different options, we're not quite sure where we're gonna land with that, maybe go to the building or use it somewhere else, but, and then that'll become a, a parking lot as it was.
That's what I was gonna say.
And it had a turnaround.
It loops back around very similar to the way it did before, but we chopped off a couple parking spots to get in.
So, that will not all be dirt as it looks like right now.
Right about, right below where the mouse is, that's where those four concrete pads are, yeah, those four right there. So, it'll be, it'll be probably ten feet this side of that, and that'll be the edge where it turns back around.
And that garage doors where the construction?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Where they can get deliveries and stuff like that as well, yes, correct.
Great, that's awesome.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Can you enlarge that? It almost looks like a... No, never mind. It's giving, eh, there was an optical illusion.
Okay, next slide, please. Some of the project highlights, is this the end of the year, I think it was the last month of school, we brought the juniors, the wood shop juniors in from the class that, they're, they're gonna be the ones to actually get to see the class, so they got their first walkthrough. Like I mentioned earlier, March, the, the staff, some staff walked through. On the project, we were at a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in tax savings by doing owner-direct purchase orders. I'll let Cory speak a little on that.
Yeah, just so far, you know, I'm not sure how familiar you are with owner-direct purchase orders, it is somewhat of a process, and essentially, when they bid this job out, they go, they do all the things that they're supposed to as far as getting pricing, and it's taxed. And when we have larger projects or larger material, we feel that we can save tax, then we will, they will give us that, that particular proposal, then we cut a P O to that vendor minus the taxes, because obviously, we don't pay tax. And then, that's where the tax savings, if we didn't do that, I mean, I, I know we're tax-free, but we pay the tax
Right, right.
Through the contractor, so that's where you get the tax savings, and that's where, so far on the project, is a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of savings.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Have there been, are you gonna hit, have there been any change orders?
There has been several change orders, everything so far has been within our overall budget and our, and our contingency. Mr. Furry asked earlier about some delays that, I mean, we do have one that we're, unfortunately, we're working through that with a contractor, and we're gonna come back with you all with a resolution, and, but it still will all be within
With budget.
The budget, that, yes, that's, that's in the, in that, not to increase the overall cost.
Got you.
So, the site work, the, the parking lot looks pretty rough right now, they're, they're going at it pretty hard and strong, but the site work around the campus, the paving, the, the cleanup and the grass will happen this summer, so when the kids come back next summer, the, the campus will look much better than it has. They're currently working in Buildings Six, Nine, Ten, Eleven, and then, of course, the new buildings, the, or the, the areas they're contracted to work for, which is Four, Five, Twenty-two, and Twenty-three. So, they're all over campus right now, and everything's, we're working well with Ms. Bozeman, but, you know, we have our challenges there, too. So, it's going well.
Good, okay.
And then, besides having any questions, if you guys wanna come out and do a site visit, if you contact myself or Cory, or contact Cory, and he'll schedule it, and we can get you guys out there to do a site walkthrough, to, to come check out all the progress.
Excellent.
So, you're, you're welcome to come out anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great update.
Any questions? Okay, see you then, but thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You're not getting rid of me that fast.
Yes, well, you've got the next one, that's right.
Yes, sir.
So, here's the facilities we're going to.
You, I did put in front of each one of you a copy. I had some last-minute changes and wasn't sure if it was gonna be updated or not, so I gave each one of you a copy, that you, you would have that as well, in case that we didn't get that. So, next slide, so what we're gonna go through is the changes to Board Policy Three Twenty, changes to the handbook, in addition to the wave fee, and then the district recommendation. So, if you would look at your Board Policy Three Twenty, which should be your very first attachment that I sent to you, and the way I have this set up, just so you all know, is on the, I'm just gonna list like where the changes are, not gonna read through them. I mean, if you have any questions, please, at that point, just ask me. So, in Section One Subsection G, we added a definition of what an employee meant, 'cause it was not in there, and that was getting with H R and other district.
Cory, can I ask you a question? In the actual policy that we've gotten, is there a reason the red line has been redlined?
The, when we redline it, we can't, the, it won't let us strike through and just red, so...
I, I, I'm sorry, maybe I should ask questions of them. So, we're, I'm making an assumption, which I know is bad.
No, that's okay.
The red writing would, typically, you would think those are changes
Correct.
That are being recommended, and it looks like there were, the red writing was made as recommendations, but now, we're looking at language in the policy that is red, that has been struck through.
You're on the next page?
Yeah.
'Cause the, yes, I'm, when you do the, I was trying to do a red line strike through, but it, it does not allow you just to do a red line strike through. It may, you have to do the word and the, or it would be a black strike through.
Let me ask you this, is all the language that's in red, forget the strike through for a second, is all the language that's in red, was that new language?
No, ma'am. If it's red struck through, that was existing language.
So, look at the bullets, look at the bullets there, are all the, is that new language? She's asking.
That is, yes.
So, anywhere that there is red language, that is new language. Anywhere that there is a strike through, that is old language that was turned red when you did the strike through.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Conklin?
All right.
So, wherever there is red writing, that is not, does, is not stricken, wherever there's red writing, that is new language.
So, in C?
So, so, C, that first sentence?
The non-school team, that was existing language
It has a strike.
That we are, that we are removing.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so, I think I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So, would it be, I guess, we'd, next time, to leave it black and just strike through it?
Yeah, I think that'd make it a little more clear, so, but you're saying that, that this red, if it has a line through it, that it, that is the existing language in the policy.
That is correct.
Okay.
I, I think it would be better
You understand what I'm, I'm getting my confusion on?
When going through this, to just to have the red be the changes, right?
Okay.
And then, just have a line out through the existing language.
Okay.
It'd just be easier when you're looking at the page to decide.
Like initially, I thought
Yeah.
That, that all the red was brand new, and then, maybe there was internal discussion to strike through
I can see how one would come to that conclusion.
Okay.
The language, so it's helpful to know that anything struck in is old language. Language. So it's helpful to know that anything struck in is old language.
That's correct.
Even if it's red.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Um, so then going to, uh, section two subsection C through subsection F. Um, the main thing here, um, when I was looking at this, the way it was previously written in there is the Flagler County employee and, and it was written mainly for athletics. And there was five different, as you can see, the, the struck, struck in out part of that, what they had to qualify to, um, to be an employee rate. And I looked at this trying to say how does, um, and I, and I'll use a dance teacher that may have their own little organization on the side, be able to use our facilities by employee rate. Based on the old language, they wouldn't qualify or be able to do that. So this is written to, um, more to allow any employee that's our district that wanted to fill, would be able to, um, fill out or have this opportunity now where they wouldn't have before. So that's where a lot of, um, the changes. And then, uh, where the bullet points are, just going through what that is, what that qualifies them to be able to have for their, um, fee, which is in the fee schedule, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, and then again, one through five is struck through because that was what was previous. Um, and then you have F, um, in there about the reservation, um, and the insurance and all of that that goes through currently our Facilitron.
So does this dramatically change? Because we're doing away with the $250 flat fee for the year. Cause that's struck out for a flat fee of 250 per year.
And it'll be later in there, but the way it is, we've broken up into, uh, semi annually. So for six months from January to July, uh, excuse me, June 30th is, is 250 plus a application fee. And then from July 1st to December 31st is 250 plus an application fee. So it's, it's split up into essentially six month.
So but we're doubling that fee.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a reason?
Um, when we were looking at the assessing, uh, the use of our facilities and a lot of, um, for instance, there was an organization using, um, FPC, uh, football, not the stadium properly. We, we call it the practice field area and they were coming in on a, a Saturday and a Sunday and essentially using it all day Saturday and Sunday. And there was a lot of wear and tear that was coming back to the district. Um, and some other gym, gymnasiums, they were using that. So what we also did in that is we limited to saying that this um, covers for a maximum of four hours of usage of somebody for practices and scrimmages. Um, and if they had a paid event, then that does not cover the employee that they would need to pay for the, whatever the fee table, um, says that that would be. So if they had a competition on Saturday, whatever the fee would be to use that field, then they would need to pay for that since they're charging. Whether it be parking, just admission, um, because there was some, we were finding out there was some of that going on and we just wanted to try to make sure that, I mean, they're getting a great deal. Um, just making sure that we're also looking at the district and that we're able to keep up with our facilities and, and our fields.
And, and I appreciate that. Um, I'm just wondering, with the changes to the flat fee, going from an annual to a semi-annual and the changes to some of the other cost structures. Have we cost out or priced out some of these organizations where they're not going to be able to utilize the facilities? Which means our kids ultimately end up losing out.
Well, I mean, I, I did not, we did not break down what, what, for a whole year, but typically you do not have organizations that will rent from January all the way to December. They're, usually when they're not having those events in the school, the off time is when they're using those facilities. So that's how we broke it down in those months and we can look at that to see or evaluate.
I'll tell you why.
Just tell me about that list of people who are getting free use.
I guess.
And there's a large list of people who don't.
That's the way.
Yes.
How long ago was that fee initially implemented? That 250, how many years has it been that way?
I was going to say from the beginning, but I'm aware.
And that would be going back over 10 years?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, well, okay.
I'm sure. It's been, I mean, that's what it's, since we've been charging the employees, that's been the, I'd say it that way.
Well, I mean, I, I, without, I mean, we could definitely do some, some studies there, but I mean, going from 250 to 500, I, I don't think that's a, a large amount that, that would.
I agree with you.
In the concern of, of shutting people out, it's a small incremental change on that side. That, I just was addressing that part of, of it.
It's not so much the change in the 250. So prior to that, when they change, when they paid the 250 for the annual fee, were there any other fees they accrued?
No ma'am. I mean, other than the, the application fee, that one time fee that they would have.
So you have to think now, it's not just the change in the 250 that's going from annual to semi-annual. It's that change, but it's also the change in the utilization for everything there is a fee and a charge for. And there's a $35 fee for every time, an incident, every, um, activity that's planned, right? The application that's taken, right? But the, the, what immediately came to mind for me was we just had this whole conversation around the utilization of Beltar Swim Racquet Club with the swim teams. Not the district swim teams, right? These.
Fluids.
Fluids. I was going to say sinker bells, but I was dating myself. But if you now look at all of the charges that are happening for that, have we now just priced out that even as an opportunity? And I haven't had any conversations with Carrie. I have no idea. But I'm just wondering, I understand the reason for cleaning some of this up, but these are a lot of financial changes in one year. And I just wonder what the impact on students and children in the community are going to be, whether or not those activities are still going to be able to actually happen and take place.
And, and I'll just let you, if you want to use Carrie, if she was a district employee, she would be able to pay that, that 250 for the, for the six months and be able to use that facility for four hours every single day for no additional charge. As long as it wasn't a competition. So for practices and or scrimmages, she would be able to use that facility for seven days and be up to four hours every single day for no additional charge.
Okay, then I'm misunderstanding. So thank you for clarifying that. And that would go for football, that would go for anything. Because I thought it was the 250 plus all those changes in the fees.
What, we already have the application fee. The change is the $250 now will be for the quarter. And then the recommendation is that if it were to be a paid, a competition, a paid event that they were hosting, that it would follow the normal use of facility rental process. So that is where the other change would, would be, Dr. Conklin. Is if I was hosting a paid event, then I would do the use of facility in a different manner, um, than just the $250.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So on page 14 of the use of facilities handbook, when we talk about Beltar Pool and the renting of lanes for the entire pool, she, they would not have an additional fee charged to them. So for example, if during May to September, with a lifeguard, they're renting the pool, would it, would they, in addition to the 250 and the application fee, would they also be charged $55 per hour?
If she is an employee.
An employee.
If she, if she, correct. If she is fallen under the district, um, definition of an employee, no. She would pay the two hour, uh, $250 for whatever, you know, those six months. And as long as she was under the four hours per day to be able to utilize it. This fee would be if they were not an employee and or she wanted to on Saturday have a competition where she was charging.
Gotcha.
Then this would come into play because the employee rate does not cover.
Understood.
That part.
That makes sense to me. So then on page 13, same, same clarifying question. I'm a, I'm an employee. I was going to say a coach, but it doesn't really matter. I'm an employee and we're, I'm hosting a baseball clinic, a football clinic, soccer, whatever it might be, practice. As long as it's just four hours, there's no additional fees for them. They're not paying $125 per use or they're not paying per hours for anything. Four hours are covered.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Each day.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, great.
As long as it's not a paid event. And when we mean paid, not that the students would have a, a fee to be able to join that. We're talking about their having.
Charging admission.
Talking about gate fees.
Correct. Admission, whether it's parking, admission, any of that, that to us, then that becomes, because we're giving them a very discount. Now they're charging people to come in and we feel that that should not, that should be waived.
I understand.
I agree. Yeah, that does sense. I get that.
And, and some of that also comes in to ensure that we have a proper, um, security that is necessary based on what the current use of facility state. Um, it's just making sure those individuals have the, the, the level of security that is necessary for those.
Now it's only security required if it's over 100, correct?
Yes.
That, that's what we proposed and that number, we just kind of, we are, uh, team, my team.
It's our recommendation.
Right. We just looked at and said, what does it look like to where we would need additional? I mean, we looked at 50, we felt that that was a little bit not enough and 100 kind of where we all agreed on. However, that is our recommendation. If you all feel that there should be something different, uh, obviously.
So Cory, when they're out on those practice fields, uh, behind FPC, I'm just thinking about when my boys did summer football. It's so ridiculously stupid. But anyway, I didn't mean that, that way. It's just hot. But anyway. Is that like 100 hits? It seemed like it was an awful lot at the time.
There probably is.
So would they be required to have security at the prac, every practice?
Um, typically our staff, um, you know, and I would have to ask Tommy, um, I know when we have our own kids there with their own coaches and different things, that's falling under the school and not, um, not a coach or somebody having their own organization, then we have different.
Got you. Okay.
Administration there and different things that are required. I'd have to ask Miss Moore if there's more than that.
Thank you. I, I didn't mean to.
Are we back on this, this document here?
Well, and then it's just subsection, um, you know, A, B and C. And again, a lot of this was just some verbiage that we needed to, um, add to, to make it a little bit sounding better. Um, and then, um, and C, we didn't have in there about the waive fees and the limit use being an annual that we would do. We look at this every year annually, even though we all know that we did, it just, it wasn't a part of that. So we wanted to make sure that that, that was put in here. Um, and then in G, one of the things is all events with 100 or more people in attendance is when um, required to have security. Then going to section X, under political organization and it was, it was just, uh, relocating where the word only was in that particular paragraph. Um, as far as board policy 320, Cory, is there any other questions, concerns, thoughts?
I don't know if it's the same document. I thought I read something about a staff member has to be on site. Is that new or?
Um, that has always been in, in the documents and it should, I'm not sure if it's board policy or in our handbook.
I think it's in the handbook.
Um, yes, that, and it's a, an administrator and or a designee. Um, so part of our, my use of facility person and or someone from plant service may be able to attend, you know, to work that. And a lot of it's just to make sure that there's somebody there that has the interest in the, in the district and making sure that those organizations are doing what they should be on a larger scale.
But that's not really new.
No ma'am.
But it's in red?
Yeah.
Cause.
Page seven.
I believe we changed the, in here, I don't, in the handbook, I don't believe it was in the handbook. I'm looking in.
Cause that would mean that that football practice that I just described, we'd have to have an administrator. And I'm not talking about high school. I'm not talking about a district team football practice.
And that will come out of additional costs.
So that is new.
Uh, I will get back to you on that because I thought it was in the board policy and I could be wrong.
I was curious if it impacted all the, the local churches that are in the buildings.
It's in G on the board policy.
That was new.
What section date?
I don't think it's G.
It's, uh, under the fee and insurance number.
Page.
Black on the board policy.
G.
Yes.
Okay, so but it's only for events over 100.
This is what was, I mean, again, this was, it was not in the handbook and it was in board policy is why it's red in the handbook.
But the only part that is new to the board policy is the all, um, all events with 100 or more.
That's correct.
So is that new for the local churches in the buildings?
We have, it's not new to the, to the board policy. No ma'am.
But it's something that.
Thing though, are you asking about? Are you asking about the security in G or are you asking about having an administrator on site?
Administrator on premises. I never really.
And that's something we definitely need to consider because in that example, and I can think of other examples, there would not necessarily be an administrator that is on campus. And so that may be something that we need to look at. Is that something that should continue as we make some changes?
Yeah, I guess also is it, is, is event, the word event all encompassing or is there a different type of use? For example, if it's something like in this example, if a church is running it, are we considering that an event where 100 applies? Or is that could have another category of use, right?
Right.
So, um, it might be just adding some distinct language. Or is it an event that involves children or students or, you know, what, what, what triggers that school district administrator?
Isn't the 100 for security reasons statute? Is that statute?
Um, I will have to, Mr. Tommy's back there.
Just in time.
Talking with, come on up. They're asking about the.
Nice try, Tommy.
100 people for security at the, if that was statute.
No, so, so the sheriff's office does have a matrix, uh, that they go by for, for large events. And it's not just uh, related to, to schools. It's for community events in the city or anything. There is a matrix that they, they go by. Um, in the past, um, we, we haven't, uh, worked with the sheriff's office, uh, for, for large events. Um, I, I do know that there is, you know, even a large event at a, on a Saturday at, I believe at Matanzas High School with well over, uh, I would say 400, 500 individuals, uh, at this event. It was a gymnastic event. Um, but there was no law enforcement present. So, you know, anybody, they would have to call 911 in case of an emergency. Um, but the, you know, we, there is a matrix they, they do run by.
So I guess you had brought up that one. Did you want to share that question?
Just about administrator being, um, on site. And I was just curious about on Sundays when local churches are using the buildings.
Is that considered an event, you know?
So I'm not familiar with the administrator's, uh, language. I don't.
So it seems like we just need more, we need to get some more clarification.
No, I think, well, yeah, because I can tell you right now, I mean, this is currently in board policy, but I will be the first to say that this is absolutely not being followed, but like it is currently written. Because in the, the, the very instance that you described of a Sunday, there is that, there is not someone assigned. Maybe there's someone there because they attend, but that's just by happenstance. And so it is, do we still need to continue to have this language present that when an event or however event is described in anything that's happening on our campus, do we, and do we expect for a district administrator to be present for any, any event or activity that's happening on our campus through use of facilities? And I do not know how we would sustain that, the amount that our buildings are being used.
So I think that we definitely need to get some clarity on, on the language here and however.
Okay.
Will you put an exemption statement in?
All right, exemption statement or whatever the best language to put in is.
Cause if it's a Sunday, you're also talking probably double time.
Right. And then how would that be paid? And if it was pushed to whoever's renting it, now their cost is going up and.
But I think one of the big things that we also experienced, especially when we were, we're, we've been working through, and this came up, um, during our time of working through the, um, the Carver Gym, is that was one of the requests of Fennell Police Department, is that when there is an event that is happening on our campus with a large number of people, you as a board can, can say if you don't want it to be 100, you want it to be more than that. Their request. Their request was that they be made aware of what that is. And so that's something for us to consider is when there is something happening on our campus that we are not hosting, cause if we're hosting it, we have law enforcement there. What is that number that you would want it to be triggered that they would need to use, um, detail through our sheriff's department?
And/or notify the superintendent's office?
Yes.
So that you know there's an event happening that weekend that's gonna garner four or five hundred people.
And just to, through Facilitron, that is one of the, the questions that are in there when they're filling that out is how many attendees do they plan on having? So that is something that we already gather that I, that if, we should probably get that information to the superintendent and/or law enforcement, if, whatever that number may be from the board.
Or looking at, you know, if there were going to be four hundred and fifty and, you know, when I was at Renn Bay, we, we had large events that were through use of facilities. Is that when you want this to be triggered that, yes, if we're gonna have on our campus outside the exemption of our long-term partnerships with our churches, um, do we want to then have an employee that is on campus as well as, uh, law enforcement? It's something definitely for us to consider.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know also if the board would.
Want to consider the Florida seven ninety point zero six, um, subsection thirteen, which talks about, um, permission to have concealed carry on property that is owned or leased by a church or any religious organization. And so there's rights that any religious organization, um, that would supersede us as the property owner under the statute. And it would be up to each religious organization whether they would say that weapons aren't allowed during a service.
So we've got a little bit more work to do on this policy, looking at the statutory implications really, it sounds like.
Section five code period G says that, just like a normal school event, we should not have weapons on campus. We've got to make that fit with that statute.
So we can require that in the, um, we can't state that? So we, statutorily, we have to allow that?
That's, that's how it's been interpreted so far.
And churches can also have their own place too, that they may be hiring or whatever.
Yeah, I think it's said in there. They just have to prove that they have their own security.
Correct.
That's more to look at for that.
So that, that's it with, thanks Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy.
Um, that's it for, um, policy three twenty. Then we'll go to the handbook. Um, if you would open that up. And again, um, the first thing is the table of content or the cover page is updated the year. Table of contents, there's a few, um, just been page changed. We, I shortened some stuff, took some spaces out. So the, some of the pages just changed. Formatting, yes ma'am, thank you. Um, then on page seven, um, added in, uh, a lot of the stuff is adding the Salto card to the key that was not in there before. Um, and that also follows in with our key procedure, um, which is on that as well. And then on page seven, as we spoke earlier about the supervision, and that's where it talks about the administrator, which was in board policy, which we need to discuss a little bit more. Um, page eight is the a hundred or more. And again, if that, the board would like that to be different. Again, we didn't, we just pulled a hundred and it sounded like a good number. There was no rhyme or reason other than that. Um, and then, uh, the, the last bullet is organizations, if they want to provide their own, they just have to prove during, when they're applying or filling out, that they'd have, they have to prove that they have that, um, for security. Um, page nine, we just changed, instead of an administration fee, we, we felt like it was better to call it an application fee, non-refundable. Um, and that was at the pleasure of talking with Ms. Masaro, um, to that. And that was that change. And then on page twelve through fourteen, and here at the top of page twelve is where it goes over the employee rates that I discussed earlier, how that's broke down from January to June and July to December. Again, with that thirty-five dollar application fee that's non-refundable. Um, and then the, um, changing some of the, we felt that the tennis courts, looking at some other areas around, we felt that that was on the high. So that's why, um, you will see that we reduced them, um, on the tennis courts. The football field and some of those where it was a per use, usage, we, again, to fall in line with what we discussed earlier, it's per four hours or up to four hours. Um, and then we also added down at the bottom of page thirteen, the Flagler County Sheriff's. Um, and that is the, this is going through us and that's why it's in there. It's also off of their fee. So if the Flagler County Sheriff's Office fees go up, then obviously that would go up. And that's why we put that in, in there as well. Uh, page fourteen, um, we did not have, um, in, in here, we did not show the per lane usage. So we added that in there. And then also the, I apologize, I skipped over the youth center. We also reduced that considerably, cause we just felt that the, um, the rate for that was just really, really high. And changing that. Um, we did put at the very bottom that a lifeguard is required unless a valid certification can be provided the time and reservation if they had their own, and then they wouldn't have to pay for the, the fee of that. Um, and then on page sixteen is just again adding, um, Salto card to the very end of that statement and according to the key procedure that we have in the district. Is there any questions on the handbook?
I'd just like to thank you for the, the rink, because you were right, it was way too high. And these that are set here now are reasonable. Plus, I like the fact that you added Flagler Youth Hockey as one of the exempted groups.
Yes.
Because that has become now a larger group. And they're actually, we didn't have that when we first opened that rink. So it's nice to see the growth and that makes a lot of sense, cause it's all kids. It's all kids learning. So that's a plus.
And that leads to the last document is the wave fee. The only change is adding Flagler Youth Hockey to the non, non-paying clients as an organization for that.
It's good.
That's all I have.
Lot of cleanup there.
All right, so we'll move on down to eight point zero three.
And this will come back before you again in July.
Freeman?
Did you want me to stay up here with you? I'll stay up here with you, David.
He likes.
My seat's warm.
Right, good afternoon, Board Chair, Superintendent Moore. The last board meeting, you had asked me to set up some time to walk through, uh, the historic County Courthouse and the annex. All board members had the opportunity to walk through and ask questions. Uh, we did receive a copy of, uh, from the county, we received a copy of a structural condition assessment on both buildings and both buildings were listed as in good condition from this assessment that was done in March of, or I guess it was May of this year. Um, we are waiting on an appointment for an indoor air quality inspection of the building. And at this time, it makes sense operationally to move forward with this proposal and start, uh, to have a conversation with the county. And we would bring to talk about a contract. We would bring that contract back to the board for consideration and action. And I'm open for questions at this time.
Well, I guess, right off the bat, I know we have a list of potential programs, but it feels like if we're gonna enter into a contract, we should have some sort of a plan on.
We do.
What we actually are going to do. Um, and the other thing, and, and I know you mentioned this when we were walking around the building, that we would have the Flagler Historical Society come and.
Right.
Share with us what their vision and thoughts were, because apparently they were well down the road with the county having these conversations before we kind of jumped on the bandwagon. So the building is plenty big if we, I, I think it's proper.
I did reach out, I did reach out to James Fisk and he is a board member at the Historical Society. And, um, they were looking at a revised plan.
They're, they're working on one right now.
For the building. They don't have one right now. Um, they would like to come back to the board on the ninth and show you what their, what their plan is. So.
So is there, is there a plan to, to show us how they might co-occupy the building with us? Is that, that's what they're coming forward with?
Um, I, what he had told me was that their plan is to use the entire historical side of the building.
I, I got the impression from when we were walking around with them, that they were talking about a portion of that section. Not the whole two stories and the whole, well, that's why I think it would be beneficial to have them.
Wait to see what they bring.
Right.
Respectfully, we probably.
Sure, we'll wait to see what they bring forward.
Yeah, I think.
And I, I mean, I think it's important to also, um, state publicly, you know, we were not aware of any type of communication they were having, or if, if they had s- a, a, an agreement when we began to look at this as an option. Um, and so we, we want them to, to know that, that it wasn't, you know, here we come as a, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think they went literally with Flagler County staff to visit another historical courthouse. I forget the name, Polk County. And they were able to see what they kind of did at Polk County for maintaining the history of that county. They had a similar situation with a old building courthouse that was not being utilized anymore.
Was it being occupied by, by the school district?
No, I, I think it wasn't being occupied by anybody or at that point in time. So they were, um, and that was a while ago. So they've been having these conversations with the county. I just think respectfully, we should listen to what their proposal and their plan is. The building is pretty big and if we can be a collaborative partner in that, I think that personally.
If that is the direction of the board, we can reach out to them to get them here on, on that date.
Well, the, the one thing is we need to definitely put in priority is that we've got, let's see here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven potential programs that we're gonna occupy this building. So we have to be very conscious to the space that we, we, how much we need to utilize to operate and also to grow within that building. Cause if we're gonna sign a long lease, uh, we need to be able to expand these programs and contract them as they, as that happens. So we definitely want to be good partners with our, uh, community, but the school has very specific needs and we're doing this to, to solve those needs. Uh, if it can work out, I, I'm just saying, we, we gotta make sure that, you know, out of the gate, if, if their, if that, if their intentions are to take over, only leave us the half of the bill, back of the building, that's just not gonna work, right? So hopefully their, their expectations are, uh, reasonable when they bring that forward. So.
But I, I do think before we enter into a contract, I don't know about how anybody else feels about it. There should, we should have a, a plan on.
Right now.
Before us, how, how we are.
Right now, those programs outside of the New Beginnings Child Center, if we, if the board approves, would be going into that building initially.
So we, and, and just building off of what Dr. Congress said, have we clearly identified the spaces, where, location, where these different programs might fit?
And that's what we should be seeing.
You know, what, what I would say is, my only concern would be expensive modifications to the building to accommodate these programs. So, but if we can do it within reason, I mean, there's gonna be some modifications I'm sure we're gonna have to make. But, um, the more that we can work with the existing, um, build out, is the less cost and the faster we're gonna get in there. So I think that would just be some reassurance that we'd wanna know is, is what we're looking at from that perspective.
Does the board want to see how, where we have each one of those?
Yeah, like a plan. And a timeframe. I would like to see that associated with some type of time exactly.
That up and running.
Yeah.
You know, how, how long are we gonna be paying, uh, rent? Do we have a build out time? You know, that, in, in the lease, are they gonna give us time to build out the space? In some cases, commercial leases allow that. So things like that could be negotiation points there. Um, I understand, they're still under, the, the former tenant's still in the lease, right?
Till August thirtieth.
I see. So they, are they, is, is, would we be then trying to, um.
Move programs.
Assume, assume that lease, or are they gonna pay that all the way out through the end?
They would work with the county and whatever arrangements.
Whatever their deal is, that's their deal.
With the, with the county, right.
Gotcha. Well, it, it would be great if in our negotiations, we could look at potentially some, you know, build out time for the space before we start paying rent. Depending on the term, length and term, oftentimes that, that dictates those terms.
Yeah, I, I agree that, I think the biggest positive is getting classrooms back, number one, cause we need them. We need to have those seats available for kids. So that's, that's a huge, huge plus. I think that there's some, I was under the assumption, I don't know how much space the Historical Society wants. Obviously, they want a lot. They're not gonna get that much. I like the possibility of maybe putting it in the front of the old building.
Right, that's right.
You know, that makes sense that, that maybe they can do something in those two spaces before they would actually enter the building, cause we're gonna hard, to harden that entry anyway, where they, they currently go in where the front doors are and they have that desk reception area. That's gonna have to be hardened, that they could have those areas off to the right and it wouldn't affect one or the other. The, the other concern that I have is there's certain kids in programs that can't come in association with other students that we'd be putting in there. So we have to make sure that we keep them segregated. They have to stay without contact. So when you come up with your plan.
The only.
Are you talking about the, the. Rise up kids. Rise up kids that can't, yeah.
The only students that, and that we are not putting the, um, New Beginnings childcare there. Everyone else can be in the same building.
They can be in the same building, but I don't think it would be.
But we, we will keep all programs separated regardless.
I worry, I worry about the step up.
The rise up maybe?
Well, the rise up and the step up. Yes, yes, yes. So I just, that's all, one, the one concern that I have. I think it's a great solution and can alleviate, alleviate a lot of problems we currently have for growth.
I would imagine.
Quickly.
Adult disabilities would need like the ground floor.
Yeah, well, I'm the same. Yeah, so, yeah, we need to see those plans.
So little babies, that's out of the.
Yeah.
Cause I think last time you said it might, yeah, littles are out.
You know, one other thing, is this actively like on the market right now? Like, is there, is there a possibility that somebody else could come in and, and are we in a, in a, in a, in a conversation where we have some sort of right of first refusal yet? Or have we given a letter of intent of sorts? Well, I mean, I think we, we should, number one, we should move toward, uh, putting something forward, because we're gonna be doing, we're doing a lot of due diligence here and it would be a shame to go through all this and then another tenant pops in and says, you know, hey, well, we'll take it as is, right? Uh, so there's, I think we should be in some sort of a contract that allows us for due diligence and that it's clear that we, we are, as long as we meet these certain timelines or benchmarks, that we're in the first position to lease this property.
I agree a hundred percent. Because you're right, they come in anytime and say, we'll take it. Boom.
I can.
Make a condos.
Can talk with.
Yeah, I think they're due diligent. That was, they, what they have seen is our due diligence to say it's something that we are actively looking at and considering and that we're serious about it. But if it's something that we, we prolong, then of course they, they need to, to continue to work with.
Just like the air quality samples, that just takes time to get that back and, you know, we're investing in that and, you know. Uh, we, we wouldn't wanna, you know, we, we obviously want the option to exit if we found something that was not gonna work after inspection. But we wanna lock it down. That means for would be our use.
And we do have that scheduled for this week.
Okay.
I was texting, I was over there that, um, that we have the air quality test against Thursday. I believe they're gonna be here. I mean, they'll take a little bit of time to obviously get those results back, but we can make sure we get them back today as quickly as we can to help the decision.
I, I think overall, just based on our walkthrough and our conversation, that, that we, we definitely are leaning to favor in this, right?
Yeah.
We just gotta, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's before we sign the dotted line. That's all.
Agreed. Yeah, I think that's smart.
Yep.
Hey, Chair Burri, may I add one thing?
Absolutely.
Yeah, in addition to the air quality, um, and, uh, for beauty, and this has already been discussed, but the one thing I brought up with Dave during the walkthrough was, um, just wanting to make sure that, um, was it sprinklers, that, like, you know, what is the. was just wanting to make sure that, was the sprinklers, you know, what is the testing around sprinklers system? There are a lot of really great spaces at the courthouse with a lot of big windows, but there are certainly a lot of places, these are classrooms that have no windows, certainly where addition has been added. So, that's just kind of my piece. I would have a lot more peace of mind knowing from a fire safety perspective that everything is to code and also just any thoughts from like teaching and learning as far as, you know, the rooms that have zero windows, like what, what really should those be used for and what shouldn't those be used for? So, that, that was, that was kind of a main thing for me from the walkthrough.
Okay, and, and just to add on to what Ms. Sun said, you know, I know in, in commercial leases, I've, I've seen horror stories where the tenant came in and it was not up to code and then they had to bear some extreme cost, like fire sprinklers, for example, that, that was not accounted for. So, we definitely want to make sure that the, I, I would, I would imagine it is, because it was being used before for school, but just another thing, just to double check, that we're not gonna have to add on new safety items that could cost a lot, especially in a large building like that.
Mm-hmm. And some of that will be in that negotiation of what parts of the building we maintain and what parts of the building that county will continue to maintain.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have discussed with each one of the program directors that we've looked at putting in that building, what their floor plan, could they use existing, do they need a wall or do we need to tear down a wall?
Restrooms.
We, restrooms was a question for the rise up students. They would prefer to have restrooms, individual restrooms in the, in the building. And, you know, we're even looking at, is it feasible to add a small restroom right over top of one on the second floor or on the third floor? Where it would be, you know, relatively inexpensive and to be able to do that, to provide for that particular program. Or maybe a small kitchen on the, or stove or something for rise up, not rise up, but for step up. Because that's currently what they have, is they have a kitchen, they have a, a dryer.
Have the same.
You know, where they can do some training. So, you know, we, we looked at, we're looking at all those options as well.
Good, good.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
So, I will schedule for the Historical Society to come back on the ninth. And then, on the ninth, I will bring back the plan, showing you what we have outlined so far.
I think that would be great.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that ends operational services and so we will move on to public comment. Anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
We do not have any public comment today, so we'll move on to board member requests. Any board member requests today?
I, just for the next workshop on the ninth, July ninth, I think it is. And I know everybody is at an actual conference right now, but could we get an update, could the board be provided with an update on the AI task force?
The ninth is pretty, is pretty heavy right now.
Is it already?
Yes.
Well, then.
And the board, and this week with the board brief, I'll send you what the ninth is current looking like, but it's.
Heavy.
It, it, yes.
Okay, okay.
It's not that it, I mean, we, we're nice and prepared and, you know, we can get through it quickly, but AI, I'm, I'm sorry, Ryan, to put you on the spot. Do you know if AI Spotlight is on that one already?
It might be.
So, we were talking about putting it out, we're on the twenty-third or one.
The one o'clock for July twenty?
Definitely would like to have more time with that one, so it'd be kind of our first, because I'm, I would imagine we'd all have a lot of neat questions, so we definitely want to have some time to not rush through that.
I mean, whenever.
But I, I would like to hear that too, yeah.
Just wanted to refresh everybody's memory. And if you can just give me one moment, I can kind of pull up. It's fine if it's the, what, the twenty-third.
Okay.
I mean, whenever you can do it, you can do it, really. I just didn't want it to get lost, that's all.
And we did make the, the changes for the board member requests. You'll see that once the July ninth goes live. You'll see all of the requests that you as a board have made, those things listed out, so you'll have that.
Thank you.
I, looking at it right now, three, seven. Outside of finance, there's already like fifteen items on the agenda, so the ninth may not happen.
Ooh, wee, yeah, let's move it.
Agreed.
And some of our things that we should be able to, to, to move through, because it's things that you've seen already, however. It's already fifteen items.
That's a lot.
Any other requests? Okay, then we'll move on to closing comments.
I'll wait till the night.
Okay.
Got nothing.
Okay.
Good.
Get a little more? Okay, all right, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.